All right, everyone. You've enjoyed me as a selectman. What's your lead? To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, we call our Board of Selectment meeting to order. And note, this is the first Board of Selectment meeting that we've had since April 2019. So, thank you for coming. All right, where'd my agenda go?
It's downloading.
All right, first item of business, approving the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you, Sean. Any additions, discussions? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, the September 13th meeting. I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All right, any corrections or discussions just for the minutes?
The words is, the presentation was clever, but wasn't ideal.
Anything, Kate?
No, I'm good.
All right, I didn't see anything either. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public comment, anyone? Three-minute limit? I don't know why we bother even to turn on the lights.
Because we have an awesome presentation coming our way.
It'll be great, it'll be quick. All right. The light update. Start with the projects, and again, invite my fellow selection to chip in, use an hour at the end. Rossi Property, Bill Warner and I met with initially our environmental consultants. It was a pre-meeting to discuss where we are with environmental analysis with Rossi Property. And as soon as we were done, met with Andy Becker, who is a corporate attorney and their environmental consultant, to discuss the issues that have been discovered in plants for remediation. There are five areas of concern on the property. One is a minor surface contamination near a transformer that will be relatively easy to clean up. The other four are all fuel oil. There was a gas station on the site apparently at one time. That might be some of the source for a couple of them. And some of the underground storage tanks that have been on the property are the source for the others. Three of the four are very small, shouldn't be a big problem to remediate. The fifth one is, again, a fuel oil spill. It's underneath the Green Butler Building that's on the back of the property, or this is Sabre Road. Some of it is also under the paved area towards Sabre Road. Discussion is on cleaning that up. We're only going to realistically be able to clean what's under the paved portion. But just to clean under the building, you have to destroy it. So that's the plan for the remediation we know about. The town is going to do some additional site exploration. We want to know a little bit more about the historic fill, particularly the area that was filled in, the raceway that used to bring water down from Eagle, but it's now, the reservoir provide water to the facility. So we'll do some additional exploration, but so far Rossi has agreed to clean up everything we found. And again, we have our own consultant, we have our own environmental attorney. They're reviewing all the work, consultants have watched all the work, but for the most part, the Rossi's have done. So I feel we're getting good representation outside, knowing what's going on. On October 4th, I signed the fourth extension to the purchase and sale agreement for the property. There was all sorts of furor about running around in town that we had to buy it or close on the October 13th. That's nonsense. We've extended this contract every time. We are going to complete our due diligence. And that means to me, we're going to go until our environmental attorney and the consultants are comfortable. If we want to purchase the property, we're not making a mistake. And if we ever get to the point where the Rossi's say, no, there won't be any extension, you either pay for it now or we're done, I'll walk away from it. We will complete the extension. And they haven't, they've been completely willing to do that. So this nonsense you may have heard about, we have to rush and do it by October 13th, or wherever the date was, was nonsense. And come the middle of December, if you're hearing, oh, we've got our exercise this off by December 15th, we're still in our, still doing the due diligence, that is equal nonsense. Process we have to go through, just to lay it out for everybody, we've got to complete our due diligence. And again, remediation to the satisfaction of our environmental attorney consultants. Do any final negotiations with Romo Ho, the Rossi Lumber Company. There may or may not be need for that, but that's the step. They'll come to a Board of Selectment meeting, we'll discuss it. If the board thinks we should go forward with the recommendation, we'll continue the process. If not, it ends there. But if we go forward, it also requires probably at that time, schedule a town hearing, versus what might be a couple, to discuss why we think we should buy it. But formally, a Board of Finance has to approve the purchase and decide how we're going to finance it, propose how we're going to finance it. Planning and zoning has to make a determination that the purchase is in accordance with our plans in the plan of conservation and development, those are all public meetings. And then finally, it needs a town meeting to approve or disapprove. Again, there was a rumor floating around that I was going to convince the Board of Selectment to purchase the property without going to a town meeting. That rumor is ludicrous, and frankly, I find it insulting that someone would say that I would be that devious. And frankly, stupid. You know, since our plans are hopefully to sell the front half of that property to a developer to put retail in there, they do a title search, they find there was no town meeting, they go to Rossi's, and I'm not paying Rossi's $2.5 million out of my pocket after I screwed it up. And for anyone who thinks that may not happen, if you remember just a couple of months ago, we had to go through a whole process to ratify the abandonment of Pine Brook as a result of a property search, title search, with new owners who live on Pine Brook. That road was abandoned in 1931. So anyone who thinks a little discrepancy in our purchase project, my process might not be uncovered, is dreaming. Okay, next project, Scoville Hall. Had a good meeting with Department of Environmental, Department of Economic and Conservation, not Conservation, Economic and Community Development. I told you previously, they were in favor of the project. Giving us the $1.8 million grant to clean up the property. But they wanted us to have a developer. So at this meeting, between the two, we put out a request for proposals from developers. We had one respond, who has a history of doing this type of work. We presented that to DECD, they were happy with the process, they were happy with the developer. And we were talking particulars of, okay, now what agreements have to be in place for us to get the property from DOT, who owns it now, to get it cleaned up? And what agreements do we want from the developer before we move forward? And what can writing from DECD? So we're at the point now of working out the particulars of the deal, but it is moving forward so far. Other project roads. The town crew, they repurchased paving box. It was a capital purchase we made. Has been working on grapevine. Believe they finished, I meant to go up there today, but I just didn't have time. The paving box will give us the capability to do relatively small jobs like grapevine. And grapevine was in really bad shape. The work we did honestly is going to be a Band-Aid, but it should hold for four to five, maybe as many as seven years before we have to come back to that road. And there are a few other roads that we would use that type of process for. Schuler Road, near and dear to my heart, because that's where my in-laws live. Can't, it's not, can't believe it. Card fixed all the time, yeah. Also, Little City needs a lot of work on it, but there is one section that is particularly bad, and this could be put on there, as again, as just a stopgap measure until we can get to it and do it right. So it's given us some capability we really didn't have before.
Is Little City on the road, on the plan for next year?
Possibly starting next year. Little City is going to be a multi-year project.
Okay.
Because it's the, I think it's the second longest road in town. And the conditions on it now go from pristine at the Candlewood Hill end to a little more than the cow path in that area I was just talking about, that we're going to try to do, pull up and. The other road news, just to put out, the state is going to be paving Tillingworth Road, Route 81. It was scheduled to start milling already. I hadn't seen any evidence of it, but again, I didn't go into the center of town today. So they were supposed to start that work paving the 16th. It sounds like it may have been delayed a bit, but expect that to happen again. Yeah, they've done the drainage work, they're going to do the whole road right down to the Tillingworth line.
Oh, is that why all the cones are on all, okay.
News items on private projects. A plan has been submitted for a roughly 40-unit apartment complex, two buildings and a community building on Bridge Road, the old Eco Tourism Center. This has been talked about before, but the plans have been drawn up, mostly one and two-bedroom units. And the plans were submitted, so they would go for architectural review. Still on a concept stage, they haven't gotten any permit yet, but it's a start. Also, plans are submitted for the property of 1572 Sabre Brook Road. That's the property of the southern corner of Brooks Court and Sabre Brook. That used to be, I think, the apothecary. The owner wants to remodel that building, put an addition on the rear, looking to make it available for restaurant space. And then two other smaller buildings behind it for commercial office or medical office or other. Lots going on in Tylerville, again, that 1572 was submitted today for the upcoming architectural review committee, which I think it's beginning. Some personnel issues, personnel issues to talk about. Our building inspector, Gary Vivian, has submitted his request for retirement, expected the end of this month or beginning of November. So we will be looking for a new building inspector. And you may have seen the post, unfortunately, our zoning enforcement officer, Jim Postka, passed away recently. And we are also posting for his replacement. On a somewhat superior note personnel-wise, Josh Muckel, Trooper Muckel, who's been filling in as our evening trooper, was selected to be our new resident trooper. I was able to sit in, you know, part of the interview panel for the five troopers who applied for the position, and Josh was clearly the best on the interview, of the things I consider, he did very well. I'm glad to have him aboard. Some other news, for those of you who are bemoan the loss of steady habits when they left, moved out of the buildings that simply owned and almost moved into the building next to Duncan Bellamet's. What could be good news, Bill Warner and I met with Bo Colceo, and I'm probably butchering that last name, but he is the owner of Phantom Brewery. He's a Haddam resident, the brewery is currently located on Murphy Road in Hartford. He is very interested in moving into that building next to the Duncan Bellamet's. So hopefully that one goes through. Other news, taking on hardware, if you hadn't seen it, opened, they had their soft opening a couple of weeks ago, and a grand opening on Friday. Glad to see it, them open up. Something that I was thrilled to get, I got a phone call last week from Homeland Towers. That's the company that rents two potential cell phone tower sites from the town, and the third one from a private owner in Tylerville. Verizon Wireless has gotten in touch with them, they intend to build out on two of those towers, side of Jail Hill and the Tylerville. It takes about two years to go through that whole process for signing approval and everything else. But progress is being made, Verizon has the money they want to move forward with. So I thought that was great news. And finally, last announcement, absentee ballots for the November 2nd municipal elections are available. Applications or ballots at the town clerk's office. I would encourage everyone to get out and vote. Municipal elections affect you every day, so take a look at the candidates, pick the best one. Anything else?
Okay, I have a couple things. First, I just wanted to mention that I saw a couple posts on Facebook that the "Welcome to Haddam" signs are back, and people were very complimentary, so nice to see those back. River Days was October 2nd, and it was a big hit. We got a lot of compliments, it was a great fireworks show. A whole lot of people helped make that happen. In the interest of not forgetting anyone, I won't list them all out, but it takes a lot to put that on, so thank you to everyone who helped make that happen. Grimm's Haunted House and Trunk or Treat is coming up, October 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. And on the 23rd, there is also a trunk or treat and a kids' night. We are asking, well, so the Lions Club has teamed up with Grimm's. They are asking for donations for entry into the house or the kids' fair. The trunk or treat is no admission, and all donations are staying in town. They'll be going to the Haddam Food and Fuel Banks. The Lions have teamed up with Liberty Bank. Liberty Bank will match 25% of those donations. And everything stays in town, so that's great. A couple EDC-related things. There is a pop-up market planned for the HES, the gymnasium. That'll be running, I think it's going to open what we know as Small Business Saturday, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and run for a couple weeks. They're not going to be open every day, but Jan Barney, who's running it, is doing a really great job of posting the hours and the days. So that will be coming up soon as well. And I think just lastly, I had a question for the board. So, because we, there's a vacancy on EDC right now, which we talked about last meeting. And we have figured out that two people who were appointed in early 2020, I don't think got actual letters from the board about their appointment. So I don't, can we retroactively send those, or do they need to be reappointed? This is my question.
They were officially appointed, it's just the paperwork.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just need to look, find the minute that they were appointed to that. February 2020, I found them. You found them? Yes, February 2020. And there still is one vacancy on EDC. So if anyone's interested, please reach out. We meet the second Wednesday of the month, so tomorrow, actually. And that's what I have.
Thank you. All right, moving on, this big moment for us. The Board of Education. You need to get a glass of water or something on your nerves?
Well, I haven't looked at the flyer, I'm fine.
I know.
So, you know, I'm calling in for Jeff to order today, to give you a burger, and I have five pockets, pretty good. So the first one, you know, we had a, you know, good busy start to the school year. Dr. Jean and Patty, sorry, and she and, you know, leaving away. You know, one major issue that we've seen is student transportation. Been happening locally, statewide, nationwide, been an issue. You know, with six year drivers from the districts, 34 bus runs. Our bus company, SDA, has pulled board drivers from other districts to help us out. And then additional adjustments have been made by moving a buddy event to later in the day when the school runs are over and free up of our bus drivers. As well as, you know, the district's also utilizing it as a district student transportation in order to allow another SDA driver to be able to perform their in-district responsibility. So there's been a lot of maneuvering between the towns and SDA's jurisdiction. Strategic planning has been occurring, that's topic number two. You know, over the span of three days, September 27th to 29th, we've been conducting focus groups to basically kick off the process, we have teachers, staff, mentors, community leaders, parents. And they were all facilitated by a consultant that we, which was HYA. Basically, we're trying to gather major data and themes that will help form our three to five-year strategic plan, which we're hoping to finish by the end of the school year. You know, additional focus groups will occur virtually over October and November. And we're going to be releasing a community survey that's going to be available from November, via the SDA 17 website. And we're exploring alternate methods to get that survey out as well. Data from these surveys, as well as all the focus groups, is going to be used to, you know, create a report that will be presented to the board and the superintendent around December. And then in January, February, we're going to have a more intensive process, where we're going to create goals, milestones for the district to be performed over three to five years. And then assigning accountability as well to those, some of those major milestones that hit those goals. And, you know, like, the goal obviously is to hit this, or finish this strategic plan by the end of the 21-22. Third topic, summer curriculum work. The Curriculum Committee reports that 45 staff members participated in curriculum work in the summer. That was 35 projects, there were nine discipline. And, you know, during the summer, the summer sessions, we had 153 students participating in summer learning opportunities. They were both online and in person. And they range from kindergarten jumpstart programs, I ready, and math support programs to all the way out to high school, where we had credit recovery. We had positive outcomes for all levels, so it's very well received and good work done. We also had some emergency repairs. Fourth topic, the facilities committee reported about $35,000 in unexpected repair remediation at the start of the school year. That comprised of a heating compressor unit and heat pipe C to C replacements at KABS. We also had water tanks, you know, leaders being replaced at HAI. And then in addition to that, asbestos was found in the reputation in the HKHS Cooper Program of remediation contributed. Right now, we're going through a full facilities assessment, and that's being done by Tekton Architects. And that's going to be presented to the facilities self-comedy on October 18th. And all of this is going to kind of be the strategic planning process, you know, has to be done forward. Topic four, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee gave a report on our Cooper Program Daycare program. It started 15 years ago, and it was, you know, 15 years ago was just a program for staff members, but it now has grown to more so a successful community program. We had 25 children, staff members, and 37 children of, from the community, from the community of March. And this program also serves as a benefit for our high school, specifically the high school early childhood development program. So it's a very, you know, good program in our community. The Finance Committee also reported on tracking unexpected COVID expenses for the 21-22 school year. And so far, to date, we've had unexpected expenses to purchase tents and for temporary staff that helped with employee backlogs. And then finally, some good news related to USDA federal funding. USDA federal funding will again provide preschool practices for prepaid grade eight and preschool lunches for all grades throughout the entire school year, 21-22 school year. If you need information on the program, it's on our website. And they can be found at our district and state services as all of the school menu. And the bumpkin, my problem if you go to silent, today is our new superintendent, Jeff Woodley's first day at school.
Ah, man.
So please, we're celebrating him. We had an extensive search in the summertime to, you know, find him, and we're excited to have him. Excited to have him on board. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Brent. Moving on, next item, tax refunds. We have one real estate refund, total of $4,659.38. The double payment on the taxes which came from a refinance, that's fairly common. We have 19 motor vehicle refunds for a total of $659.19.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refunds as presented.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we go back to the update? Because I forgot the most important thing was all.
No, I'm sorry, you gotta wait until the end.
I can't, because it's going to be over with. How could I forget? The last farmer's market is this Friday. We have made it through. It's going to be, it's going to be a very big event, there's a lot of vendors. It was a great year, huge shout-out to Kristi Benson, who just pulled together an absolutely outstanding thing for the community. She'll be doing some kind of feedback and focus groups as we prepare for next year, possibly looking into a different day of the week. So any feedback is always greatly appreciated.
Okay. Moving on to new business, we have one item. It's a report from the Sustainability Committee on composting.
It's a condensed version of what you guys.
Yes, because I looked at my 34th.
No, we're not printing. Not for the Sustainability Committee, no, no, no. I need to figure out if my printer can do this. I love that, because you're not risking cutting your finger, yes. Well, we have this huge, like, industrial stapler, I mean, I break out.
Thanks for having me, my name is Kristin Batistoni, I'm on the Sustainability Committee. And for the last five months, we've been investing in food waste from municipal waste. I'm here to present to you our findings and our recommendations. I want to acknowledge Jen White, who's done research with the community sourcing of the startup, Cosm, and has helped me to put together this report. Thank you also to Kristin Batistoni, who has been extremely supportive of this project, and to Chris Porser for all his support as well. So, why should we remove food waste from municipal waste? So Materials Innovation Recycling Authority, otherwise known as MIRA. The trash-to-energy part of that plant is supposed to close July 1st of 2022. Seventy Connecticut towns use MIRA. In Haddam, we are one of them, we now pay $93 a ton for our trash to go up there. Back in May, we started this, we were paying $91. So MIRA will become a transfer station, which means the trash that goes up there is going to now be trucked out of state to who knows where, New York, Pennsylvania, Kentucky, Virginia. We don't really know where. We don't know if it will be incinerated, or it will go into landfills in those states. So we need to reduce our tonnage. So 20 to 22% of the municipal waste in Connecticut is food waste. Food waste is heavier than regular trash due to high water content. But food is really not trash. Food can be recycled, just like, you know, your plastic can be recycled. It can be recycled into making compost. Compost improves soil quality for plant growth and provides soil nutrients. It decreases the need for chemical fertilizers and reduces soil erosion. So what are the options? We figured there are like three options. Backyard compost, if you live in a spread-out rural community, a lot of people are doing backyard compost. We want them to continue. Some people are not doing it correctly. You can have a presentation done to us by Gail Reynolds, who you know teaches the Master Gardening Course at Union Extension Center. She's an expert on this. We can upload that presentation to our website, so people can understand how to correctly do it. So backyard composting is going to continue. Community composting was another option, and I'll talk about that later. And then the third option, which we thought maybe might work right now, best for Haddam, is at the transfer station or curbside, but in our spread-out community, curbside is probably not going to work. So at the transfer station, to have food bins there. And to contract with a vendor who removes the food waste to an off-site banner with a composter. So Gail, even after presenting to us on community composting, she really thought that the Blue Earth Compost Project may be the best way to start. The Sustainability Committee is in agreement. So Chris Porser, the Assistant Director of Public Works, did get a formal quote from this company called Blue Earth Compost, which I'll tell you about. So Blue Earth Compost is based in Hartford. They've been in business for about eight years. So Blue Earth Compost is based in Hartford. They've been in business for about eight years. We're collecting food scraps in, in many, many towns in Connecticut. Right now they're in mid, they're in Middletown, the towns close to us. Middletown, Middlefield, Durham, and Essex, Randford. So, and plus a lot of towns north of us. So what is the purpose? They would supply us with three, to start with, three thirty-two gallon bins. They line them with a large, large compostable bag. So the three bins would probably maybe thirty to forty-five households would fill those three bins. But that's how they start, is starting small. They would come here once a week. They would dump the food bins into their truck. They would wash the bins, put the dirty water into their truck. And then they would travel to Soullington to a company called Quantum Bio Power, which is a D E E P certified anaerobic digester. In twenty-one days, they can convert all the food scraps there into compost. And they also generate biogas, which generates electricity for the town of Soullington. A second anaerobic composter is scheduled to be built also in Soullington, but it hasn't started yet. So our town receives a monthly report from Blue Earth compost, you know, poundage that will be taken out. So the next picture here on your handout is a picture, um, at the transfer station of where Chris Corse thinks that we should do this. So the building that you see in that picture to the left is the swap shaft. He would move those jersey barriers over to the right. And you can see that there's a chain link fence behind there. We would put a big sign, um, telling you that this is a food scrap drop off site. I think at night what he wants to do is, um, wheel the bins into the swap shaft, which is for animal control. So, um, the next one, and I, I gave you a bigger picture to do a hundred and fifty-five here. This is the sign. The sign would be four feet by five feet, made out of three-quarter inch PVC. We got two quotes on the cross at that. Um, the, the best quote is a hundred and fifty dollars for that. So what's interesting to note on here is that you can compost with this company things that you shouldn't be composting in your backyard. Things like meat and poultry and buns you can throw in there. Fish and shellfish with the shells is okay. Dairy products is okay. Basically, anything that grows can go. So to make this successful, the transfer station personnel needs to be trained because we will be charged, there's fees for him, for them to come here. And, um, we would be charged for any bin that has food scraps in it, so it needs to be monitored. So if you've got three bins, one, two, three, you would probably want somebody to be able to put one bin forward, open it up so people know this is the bin I should fill. Once that, that's filled, put the top on, maybe bungee port it, move it back and then bring the next bin up. So you're not having like, you know, half a bin and half a bin, okay? Um, so the next picture that you see is what one of the thirty-two gallon bins look like. And then this one is just, this is a part of a report done by Blue Earth Compost that they did for another town. Where they, they give you the poundage that they take out. So in this particular town, it was eight thousand four hundred pounds of waste that month. So once a month they give a report. They tell you how many bins they've actually served. Uh, one thing about Quantum Bio Power I forgot to mention is that when they do that process of making compost, they are actually able to contain methane, which is a byproduct of composting, inside the building. So they're not harming the, the environment. So, um, here are the costs. We wanted to sort of lay out to you what the costs are. Um, the minimum cost and maybe the maximum. So the six-month pilot program, again, we would start with three thirty-two gallon bins. For them to come to Haddon to pick up, it's thirty dollars a week. For each bin, there's a five dollar bin service fee. And there's also a one dollar a bin cleaning fee, which is optional, but I think it's a good idea. So the total cost for six months for three bins is one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Empty bins are not charged a fee. So maybe the first week or whatever, we only fill two bins or one bin. So on the next page, um, we hope to increase the number of bins that the program takes off. The only way to make this really, you know, cost effective is the more people we get to do this. So we're taking that tonnage out of the municipal waste. Um, so the thirty-dollar a week pickup fee remains exactly the same. It's just they add another five or six dollars for bin, each bin that you add up, okay? So once you get to twelve bins, will we get there? I have no idea. But if we get there, we have to go to a two-yard dumpster. So I gave you the maximum cost for six months. If we got to a two-yard dumpster, I don't, I don't envision us doing that in six months, but we never know. So that would be, um, eighteen hundred and twenty-five. The slide next to that gives you an annual cost. So I, you know, I tried to do the minimum and the maximum, okay? Maybe if we're doing this for a year beyond six months or two years, I mean, hopefully this is a program that will grow. I listed the towns that Blue Earth Compost is in. There's many towns in Connecticut. They do do curbside pickup, but in the more densely populated towns like Gilford, you know, here we're so spread out. It wouldn't really be accessible to them for the people who are using it. So Anne Rebo has told me that she has sold two thousand seventy-three transfer station passes as of September thirtieth. So that gives you an idea. Not everybody who has a transfer station pass is going to do this. She thinks that seventy of those are people who live in Haddon, Connecticut. So that's good. I've been going to the farmer's market, um, for maybe five or six or seven weeks now. And, um, kind of talking to people about this program just to try to take the call through the community to see if people in the community think this is a good idea or not a good idea. And really, I have eighty-eight people who've given me their emails. They think this is a good idea. Many of those or some of those, I can't remember how many, are people who do have private dollars like Pete's. And they want a way, they think it's a good idea. They want a way to be able to participate in this. So I'm throwing this out as an idea. That could we print up separate transfer station passes, maybe bright red or white green, something, different shape, whatever. Um, so that people, when they could come in and go around to dump their food waste only. And that the transfer station staff could see on the car, oh yeah, that's the food guy. I can't use this. It's just a thought. And Chris Corse thought the thought worked, but it's just a thought. So Essex started in April with four transfer station bins. They're using Blue Earth compost. Now they're up to five. So they didn't obviously fill those four bins in the beginning. They're, you know, building it up. They started with a hundred starter kits, which I'll explain in a few minutes, and they've sold about eighty of them so far. Middletown is using Blue Earth compost on their main street where the restaurants are, all their transportation districts. So they've gotten their restaurants convinced to put their food scraps into Blue Earth bins. They also have bins at their transfer station for people to use. And they have two bins on Randolph Road at a garage they have there. Um, so in, um, they've collected forty-eight thousand pounds since July. They average two times a week now. This is a big city, so we're not going to be that hot. They're in Middlefield and three weeks enrolled just under fifty households. They started in September. So what are food scrap starter kits and why do we need them? Well, you know, you're in Disney, you've got three kids, you're going to your soccer games, this, there, and you have all you can do to put dinner on the table. A lot of people don't have time, um, to source out, you know, I think it's a good idea, but I, what am I going to use? So these are starter kits. Programs that have been successful have used starter kits. Um, Starsdale New York has had a program like this for about five years. It's a town of five thousand people. They have about eighteen thousand people who aren't participating in this program. So we sourced out two different vendors. Um, the starter kit consists of one two-gallon countertop bin that you can either put in the countertop or put it underneath your, your sink. Um, and then a six-gallon transport bin. And also one roll of compostable bags. But these are not biodegradable bags. They're compostable. There's a difference. So, um, the Kuzotonic Resource Recovery Authority is based in Brookfield, Connecticut. Is holding a pallet of one hundred of these countertop, one hundred of these, uh, transport bins, nine cases of compostable bags, which equals five thousand seven hundred bags. For a cost to us of one thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. That's it. Now we would be recouping most of that if we sell them to, you know, and we, it will take time to sell them. Um, Kristen Battistoni has agreed to sell them out of the tax collecting office. If we could find a place.
Or now she has.
Okay. But this, um, the CEO down there, she actually didn't even give them to us if we give her a letter from the town saying that we are going to pay them that. She, she started this program way before Starsdale did down that part of the state. Okay. So the other, the other bin, the other, um, starter kits are these. So this, this is the, the only difference is this is exactly the same, exactly the same. This countertop bin is a little fancier and then their bags are a little bit different. But these come from Canada and with the shipping costs, it's way too expensive. It's three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. So more than double of this. So in terms of value, this is a better value. Um, the next slide on the top of the page, there's an error. Um, it says the wholesale cost of each bin, it should be the wholesale cost of each kit is around twenty dollars. The wholesale cost of each roll is two dollars. So the other town, what they're doing like in Essex, these, the compostable bags are flying off the shelves. People, you know, you need a lot more than one roll. There's twenty-five of these on one roll. In one case, there's twenty-four rolls. So, you know, we would be selling them. We have five thousand of them. We'd be selling them. So, um, so the other costs, so stickers. This is an example of a sticker that tells you what's accepted and what we shouldn't put in the bin. But we could stick onto either this one or that one. So we sourced out costs for that for about sixty-eight dollars for a hundred of them. And, um, yeah, so you have that handout too. Then we wanted to, we need to, um, spread the word in town. So we sourced out two, two bids on postcards. The one that's called Abto is thirty-seven hundred four by six, um, postcards. People design, print, store, deliver to post offices, um, and do the postage for bulk mainly for one thousand one hundred and five dollars. And it's a good deal. So we would just put on the postcard just something to get people's attention saying, if we decide, if the board decides we're going to go ahead with this, this is the program, this is going to start, just a few key points. And so now this little one, um, is a spreadsheet that I gave you a copy of. So let me go over that a little bit. That goes over, um, the costs. So on the top of that spreadsheet, it's listing the startup cost. So a hundred stickers. We've got the sign for three hundred and fifty dollars that goes to the transfer station. We've got the postcards for eleven hundred and five dollars. We're going to make up a simple brochure that we can, I think we can print in the town hall. Just a simple brochure that goes in each starter kit and also the brochures we go around town. And maybe if we present to different, uh, community groups, we can hand those out. We need to educate the town. Um, the transfer station passes, if you decide that that's what I need to give special ones to people that, um, have their private problems that we have to probably take that out of the transfer station budget right now. So the starter kits are fifteen hundred thirty-two dollars. So the startup costs are three thousand fifty-five dollars. And then the six-month program for Blue Earth is, um, as I said before, one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. So if we add those two together, the startup and, um, the Blue Earth cost, it's four thousand three hundred and three dollars. But if you remember that the fifteen hundred thirty-two dollars we make back over time by starting the starter kit. So, there's, I know there's a lot of information here that I don't expect you to make a decision today on the board. Um, the next two slides are just giving you the maximum cost again. Um, so once we run out of the bags, the, the compostable bags, we have to reorder those on our own. Or maybe we could see if the two-harper's worth run, wants to stop, something like that. It's an idea. So fundraising, how we don't, I know, I'm aware that the town budgets have been all the same. We, we talked to Sustainable Connecticut. Haddon is registered with Sustainable Connecticut, which is an organization based out of Eastern Connecticut State University. We can apply for and receive matching funds from them if the community fundraises the other half. So let's say just for round numbers, if the cost of the program is six thousand dollars, Haddon from Lacey's three thousand, so if they go and match you down. If it was four thousand dollars, we do two, they do two. Um, the town can give us funds for this project, but it has to be thirty-five percent of the total crowdfunding goal. For example, if the goal was three thousand, the town could give us thirty-five percent of three thousand, which is one thousand fifty dollars. Sustainable Connecticut will only match the one thousand fifty dollars. I guess their reasoning is they just want the community to participate more. Um, the town could give more, but they would still only match the one thousand fifty. Now I just found out last week when I drove to Brookfield to pick up this sample kit. Um, Jennifer Heaton Jones there told me there's a new D E E P grant. I haven't brought this to our committee yet because I just found out about it. I think it started in September. It was a five million dollar grant for sustainable projects, including food waste diverting. We have to, um, put in a expression of interest form. It's to be submitted by October twenty-ninth. And then you have to meet with them before you ever succeed and go to phase two application. So it's, you know, it's a process. So, um, so that may be a possibility. So the road to success, we have to inform and educate the town if we're going ahead with this. On social media, newspaper outlets, there's lots of ways we can do that. We're thinking maybe it'll start maybe December first, but if we decide we'll do this as a grant, that will probably push it along. So we did look at other vendors just to let you know, curbside composting, and only three. And curbside compost is based in Bridgefield. You just come to Haddon, it's ninety-five gallons a week, which is way too high compared to Blue Earth, which is thirty dollars a week. Willie Waste is based in the Atlantic. They have been doing food scrap programs at U K on at Eastern Connecticut State University. They just merged with Casella Waste based in Vermont. Casella has been doing this type of program in eight states for many years. Willie is looking to expand into communities, but they're not ready to because they just couldn't afford by the second. So I listed the research, the people that we've talked to. And I do want to say that the presentation on community compost that Gail gave was excellent. And just to highlight that, because you need a site, you need a trained or paid person to oversee the operation. It was actually more complicated than aquatic was to do actual real composting. You have to have control of what is put in and when. You need proper treatment of the end product. It's label intensive. You need a water supply. So the committee talked about, you know, maybe in the spring perhaps, looking into possibly doing a community garden lady behind the clinic. And maybe a small composting operation could be done there. So, any questions?
I just want to, I just want to say, Linda. We're just going to be talking about this, but I should really take some time and just, like, literally, so I just want to say you follow me.
Thank you. So there's a lot of detail here. I know it's a lot to throw at you. So I don't expect any sort of, you need to decide if you want to, if you want us to go ahead with this, if there's anything you want to change on the board. I, I had one committee member today email me. She wants to look into not plastic, but compostable. At least for the countertop. So, you know, I don't know if that's out there or not. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, reaction?
We use those bags before with the task.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for it. I went to the presentation that was done by Blue Earth Compost, and I, I think this was a great idea. I do, I am interested in the Sustainable Connecticut matching funding, not necessarily from the financial aspect, but I think that's a good way to get people excited about it, and to start spreading the word. And I think if people contribute to the startup of it, they'll be more inclined to participate in the long term. But as far as I'm concerned, do you have my full support to move forward with this?
Yep.
We have this place, we have new budgets. We have new budget.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll agree with that. The order, $5,500 projected startup cost you've got here, we can absorb within the transfer station budget. So rather than, my view is, rather than delay it until December, November meeting, particularly if you're looking for a kickoff in December, I'm comfortable saying, I think we should go ahead with this. I'll make a motion that we, that we put this moment, we get the recycling of food waste, food scraps, and project going.
So you're saying you take it, you give us funds?
Yes, we can. I mean, I agree, it'd be good to do fundraising, just to get people involved, but if it falls short, we can make up the difference. If we have to cover the whole pile of ourselves, we can cover the whole pile of ourselves. So my motion will be, I'll make a motion that we support food scrap with the, up to the startup cost, that's the one in the presentation.
Okay, I just need to be clear, because I'm going to... Okay. Do I have a question? Who now has the ownership of this project? Is it the Chris and the, you know, the transfer station, or is it the, someone else, their early committee now? But we'll be wondering what they've got up next, that's the difference.
My answer is, we get together with Chris, work on people, because people are going to need training, be trained. They need some volunteers outside for a month, a few weeks, or whatever, to get things up on the spot.
We've got permission to...
She's not done yet.
Little discussion, though.
(inaudible). I need to just restate your motion, so if you're...
I'm making a motion that the town will support this financially up to the cost, the startup cost as presented by you.
Up to the $5,000, okay.
Up to the $5,551.61.
Okay.
Exactly.
So then you're saying that we don't have to...
For this story.
No, well, well, I mean, my motion is that we'll support up to that, but I think we would encourage you just to get out there, do your crowdfunding, and we will, we hopefully backfill what you mean.
Okay. So we can go ahead and...
In this case, that that will really get clarity by...
Yeah, I agree. So...
(laughing)
We're good. All right, motion has been made, any further discussion?
I'm going to reiterate Kristen's sentiment, that I see Linda at the farmer's market every week, and not a single person walks by that booth without talking to Linda, so the dedication...
(inaudible).
No, the dedication is extremely admirable. Thank you for doing this. It's, this was a very thorough presentation.
But I think, you know, I think all the towns, the towns have to do something, and we're right, we just want to... So, you know, Middlefield County will be moving that way. You know, I, I talked to Old Saybrook, they're doing a whole different thing. They're doing a huge community compost, that they have space for, and they're all meaningful, they made it so hard, and we have to leave them with huge rows of compost. It's amazing, really.
And we did, because I know we had talked about the break-even point of, because, you know, the municipal, because the, what we pay per tonnage, you know, we won't be sending out as much there, and so is there, didn't Blue Earth say they could run that number for us?
He said somewhere around $2,500, but I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. It's going to depend on how our tippings go.
Okay.
You know, the cost of that is... Yes.
Yeah.
The costs are going to go up, I'm afraid they're going to go up dramatically.
So...
And if we can eliminate 20% of our waste, that gives us some breathing room.
I mean, and it's not to sound cheesy, you can't put a price tag on doing something good for the environment, too. There's, there's a component of this that's not always focused on the financial, too.
Right. What we need more of it, some people, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the more morriers we have, the better, so you get the economic driver for some people, you get the, just the environmental impact driver for other people.
You know, I can make some people fun. Some people will say, yeah, I just throw everything over the hill, you know, that's not real composting. I mean, you know...
(inaudible).
(laughing)
(inaudible).
(laughing) (inaudible). (laughing) (inaudible).
All right, we still have a motion to vote on. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
(inaudible).
Yes, Kristen, you should be embarrassed.
(inaudible).
(laughing) Supposed to be for us.
Have to wait till next month.
Now on the agenda.
(inaudible).
Can I shout you?
(laughing) (inaudible).
Go ahead.
I turned off the webcam, so it would make it faster.
(inaudible) so that it'd be easier, and we are supposed to have separate accounts just for the sustainability, so it's not going to be (inaudible).
Three.
Yeah, she asked (inaudible).
Oh.
(inaudible).
But now, we can start.
All right. Public comment. They want it, going twice. I'll say probably Robert, if Robert rules, spinning in his grave, it looks like... (laughing) Right through that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.[1767.99]